I don't think I'm.
When you were here, it's twenty nine. You will. Not ourselves. All right. The uh we will need to take roll call this.
Make sure I can do them in this. Trusty Rogers.
Here.
Trust me.
My God, it's the only thing I have to do. I know, Virginia. Here, it's the last name that they're getting me. Oh, trustee through.
Here.
Trust me.
Here.
Just again, Google it.
Here.
Oh, trustee Fairhuis, here.
All right. Thank you. Uh next up is the approval of minutes. That will be in line two. Are there any questions or changes that need to be made during the minutes? Hearing on is there a motion to approve?
So.
Is there a second? Second, but uh why? Any further discussion?
I'm gonna abstain since I wasn't in person.
Okay. Uh all those with papers say hi.
Why?
I oppose saying it and extensions. It is minister approved. Uh next up is uh comments. I did not receive some electronic via the form or via email.
Hello, everybody. My name is Rory O'Neil, and my purpose for speaking to you tonight is to, once again, drive home the need for the Oak Park Public Library to end the business relationships between our taxpayers and Alpha Building Maintenance Services. To recap, and again, for the contract year August twenty twenty one through August of twenty twenty two, Alpha submitted invoice after invoice in full for work they did not do. For that same contract year, check after check was cut by your administrators in full for work that was not done. Last month, I asked at you, the Oak Park Public Library Board of Trustees should all go to the maze branch and look at the floors. I hope you did so. At the very least, I hope you looked at the videos that I sent you. Last month, I described his gross incompetence. Tonight, I'll just call it a disgrace. I asked that the Oak Park Public Library Board of Trustees publicly ask your administrators, what happened there? Tonight's board meeting marks one full year since I brought Alpha's quote disservice to the taxpayers unquote to your attention. The current contract to clean our library has a total value of one hundred eighty thousand seven hundred thirty-two cents. I respect the request that the sentence I am about to read be added to the board proof meeting minutes. I know I failed the restriction to get there, but I. Like you all who listen to this, the contractor will maintain a performance bond of fifty thousand dollars throughout the term for of the contract for stripping and sealing the floors to a smooth finished surface without leaving any residue or damage on walls, fixtures, equipment, or furniture. Ladies and gentlemen, that sentence appears word for word in our currently valid and legally enforceable contract with Alpha Building Maintenance Services. On two separate occasions over the past year, I emailed all of you this contract. I I'm going to assume that that's not the first time you saw that. One sentence, right out of the contract. The contract with Alpha should have been terminated a long time ago. The fact that it hasn't is just another disgrace. Folks, whether you like it or not, I am a member of our community, and whether you believe it or not, the ugly story that I'm bringing to your attention is a public service. That's all I've got.
Thank you. This is very interesting. You have other other um. And I'm interested in making a public comment at this time. We will move on to item number four, question comments and board. Not see the calendar indeed. Does anybody have any comments or?
Sorry. Yeah.
So. Um as I was say, uh it was really nice being able to go to the the partners. We have a spot at the partners market. It seemed to go really well, a lot of positive comments about the library as well as a number of folks who said, you know, saw us and came over and said, recently, you were you know, the last couple of months. I don't, you know, why do I get in the library? You know, how do I register? So that was here, so. Anyone else? Okay, then we will move on to uh our audit presentation.
Thank you very much. Appreciate everyone's time here today. Want to start to just by thanking Linda, Jeremy, the entire staff for all their help throughout the audit process this year. Everything went very smoothly, able to meet all of our deadlines. So I just want to thank them for their professionalism. What I'll do, I think you guys have hard copies of the two reports, so I'll go through those reports. A little high level detail, I won't go into it in in a great detail, but I'll start um with the annual financial reports. That's the bigger report. And I will start on the table of contents. I like to go through the table of contents just to kind of give you an idea of what's in the report. It's not a giant report by government standards, but there's still a lot of information in here. So I just want to go through the table of contents real quick.
I just got to annual report.
Well, use use the.
Yeah. So starting on the table of contents in the annual financial report, you'll see uh the very first section is the independent auditors report, which I'll go through in a minute. This is the report that we prepare, we're responsible for, management's responsible for the rest of the report. And after that's management discussion and analysis, and I'll talk a little real briefly about that as well. That's on M D and A pages one through six. Then we get into the um the main financial statements. It's the basic financial statements, and you'll see you have some government-wide financial statements. Um so these are your consolidated financial statements as all three funds consolidated. A statement of net position, this is your balance sheet, and then the statement of activities, this is your income statement. This is shown uh on the uh economic resources measurement focus and a full accrual basis of accounting. So what that means in layman's terms, it has a long-term focus, has capital assets, it has long-term debt. It's similar to corporate financial statements that you would see. So if you picked up, you know, the corporate financial statements of Apple or Caterpillar or something like that. Contrast that in with the fund financial statements right after that, the governmental funds. These are presented um on a short-term focus. So there's no capital assets, no long-term debt, just focused on current spendable resources, similar to how you budget. Uh so that's a little bit of a difference. Uh and then there's a reconciliation on pages seven and nine that kind of shows you how you get to the torque term focus with a long-term focus. After that, on pages ten through twenty-six are the notes to the financial statements. I promise I won't go through these in detail. It has a lot of additional information that supports those basic financial statements, and they should be read in conjunction with them. Now, after that is the required supplementary information. I may refer to it as R S I. Uh this has a scheduled budget versus actual for your general fund. Uh then some additional information on your participation in the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund as well as your other forced employment benefit plan, uh which is our retiree help. And then some notes to the required supplementary information after that. On the second page of the table of content are the combining and individual fund financial statements with schedules. Uh so they show your uh non-major governmental funds. You have two non-major funds. I'll note that the library maze private fund was closed out at the end of twenty twenty two. So make sure you'll have two funds unless you want to open up uh another fund. Um so those combining statements are on pages thirty-two and thirty-three. And then the other supplemental information is a detailed schedule to expenditure budget versus actual for your general fund. Do you want to see how uh the general fund uh uh performed uh next to the budget uh in detail? So that's what's in the report, thirty-five pages. Lot of information. Uh the independent auditors report starts on page one, so that's the next thing I would take that. A look at and go. And you may remember, for those of you who were at this presentation last year, how we did adopt some new auditing standards last year. So it did change the content, the format a little bit of the independent auditors report. And the one thing that did change is the opinion paragraphs from now the very first section on page one. So in that second paragraph, uh it basically states that we gave an unmodified opinion, which is a higher level of assurance that we can provide to the library. And then the last thing I'll point out in the independent auditors report is on page three, other matters. So I told you there's that required supplementary information section, and then the supplementary information section, which is those combining individual fund financial statements to schedules. This basically tells you this page would like what procedures we performed on those sections. So the required supplementary information, we basically um perform some limited procedures, read the information, inquire management, but we not enough to give an opinion. So we don't give an opinion on those that section. The supplementary information section, those combining and individual statements, we give what we call in relation to opinion. So in relation to the basic financial statements that I just talked about, they're not materially misstated. And then right after the independent auditors report on M D and A page one is the management discussion and analysis. I can't tell you every year, this is a great overview of the library's financial position and changes in financial position. Um it'll explain any significant changes or trends that might have occurred. Uh it also has some two-year comparative data that you can't find elsewhere in the report. So I always tell you, if you want to read one thing in the thirty-five page report, read the uh pages here on the management discussion and analysis. I'll jump now to the governmental fund financial statements, um page. What page am I on here? This will be on page six. So these are the short-term focused funds. These don't have the capital assets long-term debt with this. Uh this is more of a budget basis. So on page six is the balance sheet. Uh and the very first uh column is your general fund, that's your one major fund. And then down the bottom is the fund balance. So this is basically your retained earnings if this were corporation. You'll see uh there's an assign for subsequent years budget uh about one point five million dollars uh because the next year's budget is budgeted as a deficit. So until that has assigned, last year was about one point four million dollars, so pretty consistent. And then the unassigned amount um is five point five million this year, which is pretty much what it was last year. Last year was about five point six million, so pretty consistent year over year. And then on page eight is the income statement, the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. And again, this year, uh revenues went up from about ten million to about ten point seven million dollars, so a very good year. A lot of the revenues went up, property taxes, replacement tax went up quite a bit, grants for charges for services, investment income, obviously with interest rates increasing, that also increased. So about a seven hundred thousand dollar increase in revenues. Uh expenditures increased about the same amount uh from about nine point eight million to about ten point five million. And then therefore, your excess deficiency of revenues over expenditures was about two hundred thousand this year. Last year is about two hundred and eleven thousand, so pretty consistent. Uh there's a transfer in this year for closing out that fund, uh the maze fund, uh about twenty-seven thousand dollars. So the net change in fund balance, your net income is about two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars in total. So pretty consistent year over year uh as far as I'm netting on goes. I'll point out just real quick to you, I said there was that budget versus actual report. So on page twenty-seven shows you uh the income statement with the original budget and final budget numbers. So again, if you want to see um how you performed against the budget, and then there's a detailed expenditures like it said, the last two pages of the report. Do you want a little more detail of the expenditure budget versus actual? And then the last thing I'll point out in this report is just your two schedules on the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. First one is on page twenty-eight, the scheduled employer contributions. So this basically shows you what the actuary at I M R F says you should contribute, what you're actually contributing. So you're contributing, as you can see, exactly what you should be. Um so there's no excess or deficiency. And then you'll see that last percentage is the contribution as a percentage of covered payroll. So that kind of shows you what the pension burden is. It takes the contributions, divides it by the covered payroll. Uh you'll see that's been steadily decreasing from a high of about fifteen percent to a low this past uh calendar year about five point five, six percent. So uh that's due in large part to the the really good returns of the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. However, we do show uh information that's uh one year old as far as the net pension liability is, which is what we'll look at next. So we're showing December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, I R R plan year-end information, twenty twenty-two, obviously uh not quite as uh not quite as good. So um that contribution percentage may have increased, so. I didn't last page, on page twenty-nine, this is the schedule of the employer's proportionate share of the net pension liability. And because you uh contribute or you participated in the villages plan, it's considered a cost-sharing plan. So you can see your percentage uh of the entire plan is about twenty-three percent. That's been consistent, hasn't changed a whole lot um over the past uh eight years. And then that uh proportionate share of the net pension asset, uh you'll see it was a, the asset was actually about five point seven million dollars as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. So it's been an asset the last three years, and then the funded ratio is that very last percentage, uh funded at about a hundred and twenty percent at December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Now, again, with the investment returns, that's going to come down a little bit in twenty twenty-two, but still uh you're going to be probably around a hundred percent as ex- excellent uh funded uh ratio. So that's all I have uh for the annual financial report. I'll talk real quickly on that smaller report, the auditors communication to the board of trustees. Now, I'll start again on the table of contents for this. This is a much shorter report. So we do have a cover letter you'll see on page one, and then on pages two through four, we have some required communication that we have to have with the board each year. Pretty routine communication this year. We didn't uh we didn't uh adopt any new accounting standards. There weren't any material leases under G A S B eighty-seven. That was a new pronouncement effective this year. So uh we did post immaterial uh leases to the past adjustments list. That's on pages six and seven. Uh we also didn't have any delays in the audit, like I said, didn't have any disagreements with management. So a pretty routine communication on pages two through four. Now, on page five are the audit adjusting journal entries that we uh prepared. So these are adjustments that we found as part of the audit process, and we have to communicate those to the board. So we just had four of those on page five, which is down from, I think, seven last year. And then the past adjustments are on pages six and seven. These are adjustments that would need to be immaterial, but above a certain floor, we have to communicate that to the board. So that's on pages six and seven. Like I said, it was uh related to prepaid, and then that was uh leases that weren't considered material. And then the management letter starts on page eight. And what page eight says in writing is that we we didn't discover any material weaknesses. We also didn't have any significant deficiencies. Um and then on page ten are the three deficiencies we noted. Now, the first one is segregation of duties. This one carried forward from the prior year just because of the small uh finance staff that you have. So um that carried forward, but remained unchanged. Prepaid expenditures, uh like I said, we we did have one past adjustment. There were some prepaid expenditures that weren't recorded uh at the end of last year, not considered material, uh like I said, but uh we made a note of that. And then there were some uncollateralized deposits at one bank uh at December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two for about a hundred forty-two thousand dollars. So that was deposits in excess of F D I C insurance or uh pledged collateral. So that were the three comments that we had. Uh the prior year comment, like I said, is on page uh fourteen, actually. So that's a segregation of duties. That was the only uh panel we had last year. Uh like, we just know that's still applicable. So that is all I have um on those two reports, but be happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
Um you mentioned the uncollateralized deposits.
Yes.
You wish that they were all F D I C uh insured. What what about the deposits that were dealt with the Oak Park Foundation? How are those protected? You know?
Uh I'm not sure.
I don't think that.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's not part of your reporting entity. Yep. You do have, you do have money in several different banks, right? I think three or four plus Illinois funds. Um but those, I think, are yeah, outside the reporting to the. Yep.
Because I did notice that at the end of the year, um we had gifts reported eighteen thousand, but I believe that this first part this year, we received them um major. Which went to the um, which went to the foundation, or it just tell.
No, it's just. Yeah. Because we don't have a foundation to put in. Oh, yeah, it's just a, but that's for twenty twenty-three, right?
I was a little puzzled. Um we have the revenues as of the, that's December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. And then we look at our financial report for the first quarter here, and it's like about two million dollars less we have in operating funds. So I just was wondering when we look at the nine, the 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 ten million dollars that we had available at the end of the year. How is it that we have up here in cash of seven million in the first quarter of twenty twenty-three? I guess I'm a little confused. I'm not an accountant.
Well, I I think the cash increased the first quarter of twenty twenty-three because of the late property taxes from Cook County that were deposited. And so your cash was lower at the summer thirty-first, twenty twenty-two than it normally is because they were waiting on those late collections for Cook County. So your receivable was higher for the property taxes, but your cash was lower at the summer thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. So you got that big influx of cash um at the beginning. The first, I think, was paid out in January, February, the the late collection, which hopefully will not be repeated this year.
They're only got the beginning of November, the beginning of the summer. That's what they've announced that they're planning.
Yeah.
But of course, that could get delayed.
So you you'll probably have a few, yeah, late collections still probably in January.
Not a, not a, not as many, but.
Yeah. Yeah, you probably will, a little bit.
Can I ask for a clarification, just because now it's been two years, and I think I really don't quite understand the deficit related or the deficiency related to segregation of duties? I know you mentioned that it's not particularly an issue since we have a smaller staff. But can you just explain a little bit to me what the ideal? Would it been?
Yeah, the, well, the ideal is to separate custody authorization and recording. Um so I think on that, if you look in the first paragraph on segregation of duties, there's an example where somebody does the bank recs also prepares the bank deposits. So custody and recording are separated in that instance. So you want to separate those out as much as possible, uh but with a smaller finance department, it's oftentimes not possible to do that.
So the person that's counting the dollars and the person who's reconciling, or they could be two people.
Yeah.
As a check.
Yeah, yeah.
I would like to know if we do have an ad hoc force staff come to that to our department. So hopefully that will help with next year, or let's segregate the duties.
Yes, and this has been uh a quote deficiency for as long as I can remember. Like, and then I'd say, but it's an excusable deficiency, but in terms of like the findings of the audit is beyond just last year. And this year, it is like.
I didn't understand that.
It is.
I wanted to understand that.
No, I, I, yeah, so it's like, as a, as a, as a for more context, uh this is a a finding that has been in the audit as as long as I can think.
Yeah.
Just the size of our administrative staff.
I remember from last year, I just.
Yeah.
I I know we're, we have some staff changes, so I want to make sure it's not, we're not compounding. We'll give you one more.
Any other questions?
Yeah. So I'm looking at the M D and A page two, and from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, dollars moved into restricted retirement benefits. Having special purposes, special purpose and unrestricted, do we know why?
I can, I'll make a little difference.
Okay. It just, it seems pretty clear that that's where it came from and where it went to. I just didn't know if there was a particular.
Yeah, the, you're talking about the restricted retirement benefit. Yeah, we we changed um we changed how we presented. Um you have a net pension asset, like I stated before, about five point seven million dollars. So we show that as restricted, uh because it's not really something that you can record. So we changed the the presentation of that basically to show that uh restricted for the net pension asset we have at I R R.
And that was a that was a like an administrator or a recording change between twenty twenty-two?
Correct.
Okay, so this was purely, money didn't go anywhere, we're just changing how we.
Presented.
Okay, and we haven't changed what we're doing with our people's retirement.
Exactly, exactly.
Changing how it's.
Yeah, just changed how it was presented. Um now, this year, depending uh I haven't seen the twenty twenty-two, but it may not be affect, it may not apply this year because there may be a net pension liability now. Um so that may go away next year or two. Because it'll no longer be an asset. That's a good question. Most people probably wouldn't have that with a noted then.
Uh those are uh board lawyer.
I I actually was concerned about the segregation of duties, whether or not it's awful or someone like not from financial to do it, because I have been for the smaller organizations. And I think if the independent auditors have any suggestion that they wish to put forward.
Oh, yeah, that's yeah, that's definitely a possibility. I mean, if someone else could uh could do that, also someone with a viewing um the bank recs at least, you know, a little more closely, maybe. Um but yeah, that's, it's always possible to have someone else who may not, you know, technically be be in finance, but someone who's competent enough to to do that.
Right. Sometimes with the receipt of, we might have someone who's not necessarily like in finance, who's looking at and reviewing, making sure matches of what we said. Not that I want to get in anyone's hair, but that was just, I was curious, if you had an alternative suggestion that you would like to look for.
Yeah, no, that that's absolutely a a possibility as well.
Thanks for bringing that up. I didn't even think that would be. Yeah. But again, I don't want to step outside of like my bounds or overstep anyone else's. But maybe just put that forward as something to consider.
Anything else from anyone?
Okay. Very, very much. Yeah, thank you uh again for your time tonight. Appreciate it.
It is your turn. Yeah, Virginia, I didn't want to make it seem like I was, this is like with several new folks, I wanted to make it clear like there was a a continued, like a longstanding tradition of being deficient. And I was proud of that.
Standing tradition of.
That's right.
But Matt decided to put me on the spot.
Well, there, okay, thank you to uh Linda and also Jeremy on this.
Well, there, okay, thank you to, uh, Linda and also Jennifer, um, this afternoon, but let's do a little lot of work in this. And she couldn't be here tonight, but I just want to say thank you for the work with that and to help in having us such a a really good overall audit report. So speaking of which, um, our reports. If we get past this one, I thought I changed it up a little bit with my report and since uh, this is Catherine, we're in Catherine month six, we'll talk about June and July. I thought I'd give a recap of, um, last six months in my report and just some highlights. So, um, in talking about current staff, um, at fourteen promotions, um, in the last six months, um, ranging from all areas of the library, from entry level to leadership team level. Um, the promotions include six five box staff and white staff. Um, then in regards to race of promotion, the last six months, the senior, the current population, um, percentages by race at the library. Uh, so, which is currently forty six percent by five fifty percent white. And so that really reflects equity and promotional options across. Uh, please note that eleven of the fourteen promotions are also non-M I S transitions. Um, so that's just demonstrating opportunity across the board, not only just for, um, professional, um, graduate degree staff. Uh, also our, uh, our F E M P S score increased from thirty three to thirty seven. Um, as you recall, if anything over thirty is considered good and fortunately fifty is considered excellent. So, um, that score is, um, what we do by yearly, uh, by annually, um, just taking the pulse of the staff as well, you know. Also with this, um, this time, we did something new this month. So, um, we actually talked about what stat commented on and their concerns when they respond to this. So we had a chat with Lian Jocelyn, who did it, um, last week, last Thursday, that afternoon session and the morning session. And so, um, I just, I just don't, we talked about it as a leadership team and you, you, you wanted to see like what we could do. Uh, when people respond to these surveys, like we didn't want them just to be lost in the air and they never hear again. So we, um, aggregated like the top five things that were the positives or the top five things that were challenges. And we just talked, we talked, we spoke to them and the staff had an opportunity to ask questions as well. So, uh, for why I understood was one received, um, who it was asked, who we modeled that for other things, so I'm looking forward to that. So that was something new that came up from our, um, F P S. And hopefully that encouraged more participants. We do have a really good, um, return rate as far as staff pulling it out. I think it's something like sixty one percent, if it's not higher, usually get that twenty or thirty percent if you're lucky. Um, so hopefully we'll get more responses, but once people will ask, you know, we'll respond to it and we, you know, we will talk the things that they said. We also changed how we did our learning opportunities this year too. So, um, we actually had people, um, putting things ahead of time and say, you know what, um, talk to your supervisor. I'm interested in, let's say, I don't like, um, the staff needs to kind of give a like an average of how much they think it's going to cost, why they're going, what they're going, what they're going to be back to the library and discuss it as a leadership team. And again, um, it's across the board. We've had people have opportunities. So, um, at least five fifty five staff members at all levels. I mean, and I'm talking certifications on facility staff, um, H R departments, accounting departments, um, leadership team, libraries, um, library assistants, people in special collections, um, learning opportunities across the board, um. And including thirty who went to the A L A conference in Chicago. Uh, a lot of people set up at first time, which it's based in Chicago, so we definitely want to make sure that no other time people get to go, we get to go on to Chicago. So, um, we actually had a video about that too, discussed, like we had, we had a learn, like, show what you learned. So we had a, I mean, that was last week as well. We talked about, uh, what did you get out of it? What are you going to bring back? Um, that was, that was really, that was like my best video we're gonna have to say, just to hear how people are excited and the ideas that are bringing back. Uh, tuition grants also, um, so not only conferences, we're also investing in people, um, again, from um, certificate level to M I, M L I S level, um, brands sold fifteen thousand dollars for the reward to all staff members. Um, so I think that's exciting, uh, grant, license certificate, special degree, and M I S degrees. So speaking of A L A, um, the director of rails reached out and recommended that we apply for the award for a little uh, Monica Harris, who also used to work here once upon a time. And so we actually did and we won. Um, so we got a national recognition at A L A for workplace excellence. Uh, I want to say, um, congratulations to, uh, one on this team, uh, but it was really the recognition of of all the things that they do to make the workplace a great place. Here's the word, it's, we, we were here in person to go get it. And thank the H R team member and the entire staff for making it a place, uh, workplace a great place to work. Uh, you can click on there and read the report and you'll see all the things that we have in place to make it best way. So it's coming around so you can see it. We also, um, we also were nominated for another national award at A L A, um, for the Institute of Museum and Library Services, for the twenty twenty four National Meadow of Museum Library Services in the area of diverse collections and artifacts. That's a huge kudos to, uh, our collections team. Uh, we're in the process of applying for that, that's due September first. So that's a big one. Uh, we watched this year, uh, they gave it to them at the White House. So, um, Dr. Joe Biden, they're in the war, so like, it's like, okay, let's shine up our office, let's get ready. The famous frost, uh, hopefully we get that one, but it's pretty good. They nominated you, I've been places where you can also nominate yourself, but I, I really don't think they want you to do that. I think they'll say, oh, bless your heart, you can nominate yourself. Um, so they, they asked us to apply for, or I think that's, you know, that speaks well. Um, there's about thirty finalists, I think, continue to get chosen. So again, just to be fair, as far as we're able to know, I think either end of the year or early next year, if we want to, you know, so we found that out after A L A had a, a letter from um, from I M O S. Uh, and then, uh, I'm sure that you guys did, um, we, we did ten policies, so we've, we've ten policies, um, within the course of this last six months. So thank you for that work of keeping our, our policies updated and, um, my point and making sense, so we don't have these, that's, that's, I, you know, like, there's this thing called the internet, here's how you use it. We don't want that on, we don't want that on our, our website, so thank you for that. Um, and thank you to my, uh, committee, uh, who helps with that, that's, uh, see Martin, Barb and Jennifer, um, help with that every month. And then we review it and leadership team bring it to you also, that will better. Um, and then, as you know, on June twentieth, that was also a great highlight. Um, presented, had presented a resolution that was a three five village board, um, for the village of Parkview, Comocentuary. So that's very, I, I'm excited about that. Uh, we got a lot of people asking us about that at A L A, they're excited, and also you'll see him ask. Um, somebody reached out from, uh, Jersey City today and asked about like, how did you guys do it? So people are noticing, uh, especially since we took it like a little step further than Chicago, that the village isn't actually um, a book sanctuary. I, I think that's what Chicago was to do and it didn't go as far. So we should be proud of ourselves that we, uh, took this great idea that was pioneered, really that, it not pioneered, but Chicago was really the base of it, the biggest one. And we were able to take it a little farther. So, uh, thank you to the H for, for, um, partnering with us. So that, thank you for your support. Thank you again, Virginia, for suggesting to me, uh, and, uh, it, it happened. So that concludes my report. Any questions, comments?
I got questions. Um, so the, we have to fifty five members in all are going to different trainings and workshops, do they have to come to you with the, this is what we want to do? Or do we have a mechanism internally that's like researching some things or is it a combination? For, um.
Sometimes they're broad things, like we know, I like eyelids, right? Or reaching boards coming up. But their supervisor can suggest something, they can suggest it too. A lot of times they, they think of things too, so what happens is you talk to your supervisor and then we have a spreadsheet, an ongoing one. And so they know what the procedure is, you put it in, you don't have to write an essay, you just say, here it is, here's the date, here's how much, here's how much I think it's going to be by transportation, um, et cetera. Uh, here's, here's the link, what's about, here's a little bit of it. And so then we take it and talk about it in leadership team and that helps us watch the budget too. So we're not just, we're not saying nobody, no, we're not saying, let me go. We kind of, we can track it and see where we are. So if we can, if we know we have, say, ten thousand dollars left, okay, maybe five people will go this way. Um, and so, and there was a deadline, so it helps people like know that there's a process, it takes away that kind of like mystery thing or also the bit that we only send libraries to things where it's only for this kind of staff. Like, uh, it's important for everybody to get trained, to keep their training up. So, um, I'm really excited about that, like that's a big chunk of staff, getting to do all the things that we're not done yet, the year's not done yet.
Yeah, I'm asking you a bunch of questions because I know budget season is like only three minutes away, so that's why I'm asking. So when, when you're looking at what programs are being suggested and how much we think they're going to be and how many people can go. Like, have, do we have any red lines about it? Like, obviously, I think we're not like sending people to Palacio in Vegas to like watch Adele or something, but like, do we have certain criteria or do we have like a rubric that we go through that says like this is a yes, this is a no, or are we still in a very like subject, because this, I feel like this is a new, so are we still in sort of a subjective ad hoc review phase or does the staff have like a, if I meet these criteria, then I most likely think I'll.
Is there a rubric that we're going by or is it kind of more of a?
Yeah, I just want like how much formalized have we gotten this?
So this is, this is a move away from a few different things we used to do. So the answer, to answer your first part of the question, we don't have a rubric established yet. So this was like the first big step into, let's make it a little bit more formalized, a little bit less kind of like you see, you see a little bit less like, um, I know one thing we used to do was like, here's this amount of money and just go to something. Uh, like here's fifteen hundred dollars. Does it cover everything? Does it, is it, what do you use it for? It could be all manner of things. At least this way, um, but I love the idea of a rubric, so that's something we can talk about, even tie it to achieve a plan, that kind of thing. We don't do that yet, but I think that's a great idea. But this way, um, it's a conversation with your supervisor, it's a conversation with us, we can see how much it is and we're tracking. So then we're not like, oh, we don't have anyone. And then we, we have sent notice something, so if things don't make sense or if it's something like it's, it's bearing toward like personal interests more than something that a benefit of the library. Or if it's just too expensive, we've had the, you know, we will say, you know, let's put something else in. Or let's save this for next year or, you know, also, um, deadlines, if people miss deadlines, you'd have to say, you know, they've come back and say, can I go? Yes, say no, I mean, we already, we already know the budget and we have like eighteen people going. So if you do that, it throws it off and then you can't send people. So we're trying to normalize like the communication, writing it down. So I think that's really our focus towards, but I love the idea for the next step to say, you know, here's a rubric, because we're trying to make it so it is as clear as possible, like, how can I see all these people going somewhere? What can I sell for? And let me follow this one, you know, so I'm looking at the job right now.
My, my other hope is that if if there's a more compact process, then we can do more cross-functional invitations. Because I know internally, just from the people who are here, there might be something that this person asks their supervisor, or like there's somebody over there who would be the perfect person to go with them. And if there's a more formalized process, they can maybe see that those things are coming up and volunteer to be a part of that. Where if it's just sort of lumped into this group of people who typically do this thing, it's, it's not necessarily in their direct purview. Um, because if we are starting to promote people and we are trying to give them the educational opportunities to move up within the organization, there could be another way that we can do it. There might be somebody way out in the field that we don't know that that's their skill. Absolutely. And if we can figure out a way to bring them into some sort of informal education, or I don't know, make them just want us so much that they never want to stop working. Um, then that would be, you know, that's not a noble, like, absolutely. Um, then that would be a great way to make sure they're fostering new skills with us.
So, and we do, um, to your point too, we do advertise stuff too. So we'll say, this is coming up, if you're interested, it's open to here's a group that's open to, so it isn't just, just to clarify, it isn't just the supervisor saying that we will put stuff like in our story to get people's attention, in case they don't, to your point, some of the people don't know, we do have a lot of new people. Um, like I said, we have a lot of recently promoted people, they don't have all the library stuff and all the cool stuff going on. Um, so I, I try to catch things, I know supervisors are great, I sometimes I send people things and say, this will be great for you. Uh, talk to your supervisor, or like I said, to the supervisor and suggest things. And it doesn't always have to be a conference, sometimes it's a webinar, sometimes it's free. Um, so we try to do a variety thing, so we touch everybody and let this chance do something, but thank you so much for that feedback.
Did you see any themes come out and things people that have requested?
Um, not, not necessarily themes, but I feel like there's more from where it's that, okay, um, I, I do have a chance to go to something and I should speak up if they're, if they're not mentioning something that I see. Um, and in the, um, the chat we had, we really emphasized that, like, uh, we want to send you the things, we think it's important. So I feel like people are getting a better realization and also of following the structure. Like I gotta, I, they really need it when they say, I gotta turn this in on time. Uh, I missed that, I saw my, my cohorts go and I didn't go and I couldn't go on. Um, so, um, I just, I feel like, I feel like the theme is that the staff is catching on to, okay, there's a process and there's opportunity for me. And it's not just for, uh, they're not only just talking to just this little small amount of people. Like the top of the meeting is the facilities who needs certification, the top of me and I T, top of me as a library assistant, there's, there's something for everybody. And we're here to support it, if we, if we, if there's any possible way we can, we want to send you.
And then to the, to the very budget, budget question, where does the money for this come from? Is there a separate development fund that we have or does it, is it based off of departments?
So it goes a bunch of my board.
Okay, so that there's a collective budget line outside of, okay. Can you, um, are you done? Can you, this is on that topic, so, um, can you tell us how with the A L A, how that, what the process was, like, in terms of who? Were there people who wanted to go, who couldn't go, like what was just, because A L A was so amazing, I'm so glad I went. Yeah, and, um, I can see the value for our employees, so I just was curious.
So we put it in our story, I think you guys did a copy to our machine, this.
We did, yeah.
Okay, so, uh, it, it was in our story a few weeks, we talked about it in, um, staff meetings and said, if you're interested in going, here's the process. And so, I mean, we had a great response, uh, we had, um, we sent other people, I believe, I think that's what it was on there. So that, that's what it was, it was the same as how we've been establishing for the last six months. Uh, we had a few, we did have a few people say, can I go? But I mean, even when it's local, it still is kind of expensive. Um, so, uh, we had to say, you know, we missed a deadline of that. We, we were able, a few people, we were able to switch them out because some people, um, couldn't go for whatever reason. We had a few like that, but nearly everybody who asked to go was able to go, who sent it on time, who, um, put it in. And like I said, it didn't just fall in the crack of, we had a meeting and we talked about what did you learn and, um, you know, what would you like us to see? What would you like for us to do? So, um, I feel like we had a pretty good amount of people going. We had people, um, who started committees who went to, so, but if you wanted anything. Um, and then we also talked about how to make that experience better. So we had that meeting, um, about A L A, some people said, it was my first time, it was overwhelming. Um, so we said, well, maybe we can get a buddy next time or have somebody to go with you, assign somebody with you, um, to go to things. Um, so that was helpful to give you something big about, because this, you, you were there and it's a lot that you've never been. I also, um, really wanted the opportunity for our non-traditional staff to go, that was important to me too. So people could really see like when it's, it's not your job and then you just happen to work at a library, like the library is center of. And then, then you add your expertise to it. So I think this time, a lot of people who, you know, are in different roles, that's what I said, and nothing else goes to the exhibit. And see, like, you know, there might be something in technology, see, there might be something related to buildings. Um, you might, you might even offer something, just something, um.
Well, there were workshops, you know, in like so many different areas.
Absolutely.
So, yeah, I could see how it would be something for every type of library employee, you, you find something. So, and I was also really impressed with the presentations that our staff did. Like it, so.
Which is also a great development then too, to just, you know, get up there and talk and be able to, uh, you know, share your knowledge, that's, that's huge. So, yes.
Yeah. Okay, great, thank you, thank you. All right, I got more questions. Um, again, with an eye toward the budget, the tuition grants. Nine staff members, I like that. Um, how, how do we feel like, do you feel like this is catching momentum and we need to be better prepared to more heavily fund this?
Yes, um, and I keep talking about, well, I'm not gonna say, in twenty twenty four, I really would like to hatch the budget piece and have that be one of the targets of supporting staff going. I just had a conversation with the. The budget issue piece, and have that be one of the tenets of supporting staff going, I just had a conversation with the. Uh dean of Dominican about them coming over and talking to our, our staff. Um to see what we can do to work together with some people, and they, they have other degrees besides just M I S, so, um. Yes, I need to definitely, and Dominican is expensive, it's not the only place, but this is expensive. So um definitely an area of growth, I, I don't know if we can just fund it all out of our budget. So if I had something like that, if I had like some sponsorship, not, not, I don't mean like sponsored by type, but. Um some support, if, well, you know, um let's look for support um by some kind of, that's what I see. So it made us really be able to grow, and make it so it's not a, a day, you know, I haven't, I probably paid my back. Uh my student loans still, again, I can't on twenty ten. But uh it definitely was an investment, my career totally went a different direction, and I, I, I remember that, and so like I want. People to have that experience too, um and not say it's not for me. Um that's the very one we need is the cost we can, so. Um they, it's not, it's not a grant, they don't have to do anything, they just, if you tell us you're going, send us the thing that you can get accepted scholarship, but that's it. It's nothing, you know, we don't make it hard, um so.
And it's not just for degree education, it's just, it's not just for the bachelor's or master's or M I S, so there are. Other certificates for, for what we were saying before, this would be separate from. Some of the things that we were talking about before, like the ALA or those kinds of education, but this would be. You know, if somebody wanted a, a coding or something, that as long as. That is what they're doing, it doesn't necessarily have to be library or their library job related. As long as they are accepted and they're pursuing a program and they can show us the letter that says. Then, then we're able to contribute.
You said it was nice and cool in here, we need the toilet to flush, we need the computer to come on, we need, you know, we need people, yeah, so yes, we. We need that one more person, so we have that um balance and account, um we need all kind of people, not just libraries, not that libraries aren't important, but they are. Is what we do, but yes, it's not limited to that, um and then when people learn and they keep their skills fresh and they keep, that makes us. Keep being that five-star library, so I, it's important to me, um so that's definitely supported, but I, to your point, we can't do it all. In our budget, right, it's just, it's very costly, um and as more people catch on to it, that's kind of what I see, that's one of the lines, if we. If I could split into three things, that we definitely want the support of staff continuing education, especially with Dominican right down the street, I think we get a lot of support for that. But would you pursue that?
I see one of the um degrees is grant writing students, and that makes me think, are there grants? For this sort of um for, for educational?
Yeah, absolutely, and that, and that's a great point.
Yeah, Suzanne's gonna give that person homework.
Well, that award that she just passed around, that was a, a player, her staff wrote that, she's um, she's a community engagement athlete. And that's, she's not a grant writer, and she killed it, if you look at it, of course, you read that, so like, we found out people can do stuff like that, um like, we definitely wanna. Uh keep bolstering those skills, we find that people give presentations, um I, coming up in the fall, we have um a public speaking person coming. Um just for novice, who've done it before, um we need some polish, she's coming, and to keep getting people, uh especially people looking at us across the country, they want us to come talk. And share, um so we, and you said, like you said, they did a great job, so. That kind of thing, this all are of continued education.
Thank you so much.
I have a few more things, but I'll stop, I just, just make a note to check the rest of the reports, there's some great things going on, we have a, um I promise. Um initiative we just started, that was customer service, um internal and external, um. Initiative that we started based on the staff's um input. So um we are so serious about it, we have everybody read it and sign it, they understand, um again, it's not for me, it's not for. Leadership team, it's what the staff said was what we wanted as a standard for our culture, um in terms of internal and external customer service, it's not. It's not, you know, twenty, ten pages long, it's one sheet, uh you'll find it aged up and posted up at the desks and. On the back too, so that's something that we just started, um our stats are looking great still, um so just take a peek at those. Um we did celebrate, um we did have a lot of fifty anniversary hip hop events, um this past one, um. Thank you to Stephen for connecting us with um our cohorts at Queens, um we actually hosted them, um the other participants. During ALA, so that was one of us, we hosted here, I would have said it's far, I was like, no, we're a place as far, we're actually close to Chicago. Um and uh they're gonna uh go to a culminating event in Queens, actually, there's gonna be a few days of concerts and. Um lectures and all that stuff, um for, um before our staff, which was um she became, Tanya, uh Stephen and. Wanta, who really, uh we saw we had a fashion show. It'd be fast by that D box, we have a um. Like you could just spit bars there, freestyle, go anytime you'd like, so. Definitely that's a really fantastic event, thanks to them, so um I will talk on and on, but I just thought I should miss those things, go to.
I had several friends in the city, uh in the Chicago, who messaged me over the last couple of months for like. How is it that Oak Park is like the, like the home of the anniversary of hip hop? Programming for a public library, and Chicago Public Library wasn't, I'm like, listen, you got, you're sleeping on. And it was just, it was, it was very, it was interesting that, like, people who aren't. In the library, in the out library world, who don't, like, were just patrons of libraries, knew. About, like, they heard about it so much, who like never come to Oak Park because they live in the city and. Got the suburbs, but um but like, they, they heard about it, and they're like, I don't understand. So, for, like, love that are, that are, that we were on top of it. Thank you to staff for all of that amazing programming. And I guess it's, it's so wonderful to see, to take that opportunity and just grab it with full hands.
Right, and like you said, it, it engages people who don't know about the library, you know, if people love it, I, I'm good, so glad you're getting me looking, I wasn't. Involved in the library, um and you're right, I, it's so funny, I joke all the time, like people ask us stuff. Like we, we have three branches, you think you have thirty-three, like, how do you guys? Uh so, um this just continues that trend too, so um that was a lot of fun, and uh I hope they have a great time in here.
To anyone who has not watched the hip hop fashion show or the recording of it, we missed some medical. It was super fun, you should, you should check it out, um it's always, that's always a nice, those kinds of programs are always really nice. Because it brings in folks that I think are not always in the library, there were a lot of people like, am I in the right space? Kind of looking around and, you know, then TLC walks in and they're like, oh, yeah, and then. So, um it was great to kind of meet and talk to some people who aren't usually in the library, who, you know, have found another resource, whether they be from. Oak Park proper, or one of our neighbors, that, you know, they now see the library as. A place where they do feel welcome, which is sometimes a question, and, and a place where they feel represented, and, and that they can kind of be contacted. And find resources, so it was a good time.
Thanks, communication, I love the sign out front, I mean, the fifty anniversary is still there, um so that, we have that, it's like a little back sequel to if you didn't know. And then there was just one other thing, we did, we had some um big changes on the leader, at the leadership team level, um in the management level, so. Um you've heard that this name mentioned, so Jeremy, um department, who last month, he, uh he went to accounting. And he's doing the same job in like a similar job in that capacity, so congratulations to Jeremy, so that was an opportunity to rethink. Um the department, so Linda is now the manager of finance, and then uh Billy is the director of finance and human resources. Um a lot of the, a lot of those overlap, um probably, as you saw, about ninety-seven percent of our budget is the staff. Um so um it was already a big piece in there, and Linda is really the one that kind of shepherd, has been shepherding, like the, all the pieces. And doing the deep dive and that stuff, so um I'm really happy about that, and we, we are hiring a staff accountant, so I think that'll help with some of the balance. Of those, that interior maintenance we still see, unless I think we should have four, I don't know, but we'll start with three, and then um. Lori Polian uh was promoted to deputy director, uh we added two um. Departments under her um community engagement, um and also the creative. Studio or the creative technology team was added, um with Lori serving for a long time as interim, she's one of our longest. Uh serving uh librarians that we have here, she's been in the business like forty plus years. Uh I think it was well deserved, uh it's been well received by a lot of staff, so uh congratulations to those three. And I, I promise I'm not talking.
Those are all under. Those are all under the staff changes report?
Yeah, we'll turn now into staff reports, those teacher priorities, use statistics, and then the staff.
I do a little highlight of stats, um in a little, of the other things, and Suzanne, is she over here?
While we're talking about social services, was my not can't kill.
In uh vestibule, my message board, so it's a. No, it's right next to the left, it's a red box.
I might need a map, I went looking the other day, I cannot find it.
Yes, so when you come in the vestibule to your right, right before you use the idea, if you get the idea, it's actually.
All right, I will go a little again then.
Any other questions regarding staff reports? Okay.
Um I did want to talk about if we have. You said we've moved. Outreach to Lori.
Community engagement?
Community, community engagement and outreach.
Community engagement.
What, I was gonna say, what's an average to Lori? So does that mean all of programming is now reported directly to Lori?
Okay, and it's, it's all public facing, and as the head of public services, I thought it was appropriate, and. With adding that, and same with creative studio, when we set it up, it was, we needed that IT focus of. And IT folks doesn't leave, but then now we need to program it, now we needed to get it open, and we need to get it staffed and program things for it, so. Um that was the logic behind it too.
Um I have to ask, because I said on the anti-racism, I hope, what are we doing? With the anti-racism initiative, and how are we working on that if it's being decentralized?
It's, it's not being decentralized, it's um, it, it goes on, and that department isn't the only department. That was doing it, and the work continues, so then we won't ever stop, that's just part of our. It's part of our values that we infuse anti-racism in our, in our programming, in what we do, so that doesn't stop from children's department, from. Um the CE department to the adult services, it goes on, the work goes on. The intent there to, so when we talk about that, what we're not doing is, we're not doing book concessions right now, we're not doing, um. We're not doing the training that we were doing before COVID. And that, having that return to public services allows for that to come back, those kind of things, where we, we have a, we have a ton of new staff. And the staff that we're here, we haven't done those kind of things since then, um that department, anti-racism, we get its own budget, it's never had its own budget before. So we get its own um five-figure budget to actually like bring speakers in, um do, do programming related internally and externally. Um throughout the library, so not just with C, and it doesn't labor that, just with one person or one department, it's, it's always been, it will always be spread. But we need more focus on the training, so we know definitions, so we know what to do about microaggressions, so we know. Um you know, we can define things and talk about it, and that we haven't had in a long time, so. That was the whole rationale behind um some of the changes.
I know when we set up the anti-racism board. One of the goals was to make sure that. Regardless of who is sitting on board, or who's sitting in whatever seat, that. We make sure that the anti-racism pillar is still part of what the library is doing, so I, I see. I see where you're going by, saying that this is now. It's multifac, it's, it's being put everywhere, how are we? I'm sorry, I'm just remembering lots of very long meetings, um how are we ensuring that we have? Some sort of standard or listing of. Goals or benchmarks for anti-racism, so that we know that. I don't know whatever word to use, other than decentralizing the efforts, isn't going to water down. What we've tried to put in place, so do we have milestones or benchmarks or goals? Whether they be internal or external, that can be, you know, outwardly facing to the board, that show that. The work is still going to be going forward, and is still going to be accomplished.
Strategic plan, so that doesn't change, it doesn't go away, what you'll see here will still look the same, you'll still see programs. You'll still see things in support, but in addition, what I want you to see, and in addition, what is the other things I was talking about that we don't have right now. We haven't had, or we haven't had a focus of the internal trainings, or um just things that aren't necessarily like hip hop. And we put that down as we achieve the goal, that's great, it is, it's great to have multi-coach and programming, but. We also need, again, I think we need training on definitions and understanding what we're researching, and having. Um a safe place to have conversations about it, those are the kind of, that's, so that allows time and. Focus to do that, and an actual budget dedicated, because previously. They had, this department had to grab from, so CE had a budget, um and you had to ask and see if you could take money out of our general budget for training. Or changing that and giving a dedicated budget, I think that was one of the goals that was on the. So that's, that is now happening, so this won't look any different, it doesn't change that we have a plan, but it just adds to it. Because that, these things are gonna happen anyway, they didn't happen because they were destined under that department, they have it because we do programming. That's exclusive.
Okay, um I know that probably the board is not privy to internal trainings. And things like that, but will those items be reported to the anti-racism board as a check and balance?
I would expect so, I would expect so, absolutely, and then here too.
Also, we would be privy to knowing about the internal training.
I absolutely want that, yes, because I feel like we're missing pieces of. When I look at the strategic plan, there's something um that includes those things, and then, because the programming will happen. It's what we do as Oak Park, it's what we did before we had the anti-racism, it's what we'll do after long for our turn, so we'll keep doing that, but. What I want to capture is. Giving our staff, so they have a, a grasp, and we have an internal conversation, so we have understanding, so it's, it's ongoing, I think that never stops. And I'm so serious about that, that I, I really want to focus, so it's not, you have to manage the department, I'm here, there's really a public base at the department, that could use that support. In that area, um this way, it's, it's navigating and collaborating with everybody, not that that isn't happening. And there too, but um and yes, once we do those things, I've, I've set a goal to have it set for September. I have conversations, even, we've talked about the expectations, so we should see that for the fall, have these plans, for every month of what I'm talking about. And then we're going with it.
Thank you for calling my anti-racism board panic, uh.
And then the board doesn't stop, the board will still meet, but you know, maybe we can do different things with that, um there's opportunities. To do things with our activity groups, um I just, I want to explore some more of those opportunities, like directly related to it that are not. Like problematic things that we do for the public, they don't stop, but I feel like we, we need to pick that part up.
So the pivot and the emphasis would be more on providing this kind of training.
From that department, yes, but the other, we still will have.
I mean, just from that department, it's gonna be to pivot more towards internal.
Anti-racism, everything, anti-racism, so, yes.
And then we're relying on. And then we're relying on anti-racism as an internalized library value to carry through the programming.
Right, and that doesn't change, so that stays, that's something to look at, that's something when we talk about, when I just talk about about training. It it's it's infused in everything that we do, we talk about that all the time, we we make it a part of what we do. That doesn't change, that doesn't stop, but um like I said, I I feel like, um you know, when we had um. Our vendor here that was doing all the training, and when we first, when we first established it, we need to get back to that, it's been, it's been a while. You tell, like I said, we had peach circle training. Yeah, of that and then everything, just talking about definitions, talking about um. Um how we deal with internalized things, all that stuff, we need to get back to that. Um it's, you know, we had a pandemic, to be fair, um but we have a lot of new people and we have people who are here and I think they need a refresh. Uh so this will, us do that, and the other stuff doesn't stop. We will still have inclusive things like hip hop that, you know, we still have, you know, we talk about our holidays and being inclusive of all that stuff, that doesn't stop what we do.
Yeah, so I have been wanting to ask about the um the peace circle, because we, Virginia, I'm gonna do it, and then the. Facilitator got sick, and so I just was wondering where we are with that, if that's something that's coming back and picking up again. I think we can really deal with um. That kind of restorative and and circle, I really training.
Absolutely. One thing I heard when you were saying, oh, this is a park and it's happening, Black War, the anti-racism plan. I think that's one thing that we all in our county cautious not to think about in that way too much. Because a lot of times the reputation and our intention of work doesn't always, isn't always met with. Action to meet it, and I think that's a lot of what that equity audit that we did and the trainings and um. You know, kind of the the uh the board that Virginia sat on and all this was to really try and make sure that. We're meeting the reputation that we have, so.
Cause I don't, I don't feel like it's the media. I feel like, I, that's what I feel, like, you know.
Have we thought about redoing the FEI? Like, I, I think there's a lot of things, I know, like we did a major, so these plans before, but. COVID just kinda like blew a bunch of. That used to exist out of the water.
It it just ripped the shelf down, that had all of the stuff, all the plans and everything.
Have we thought about, you know, I know it's stink to feel like we're going back to square one, but have we thought about going back to square one?
Not, not, but the first part you said, have we thought about, we think, yes.
And we.
We finish up the year and not load up yet, yes, but have we thought about, like, do we need to change it? Yes, yes. And then we have um like, what has, we have the community um committee that you spoke of. Um staff lab that put, so it's. So, just like, you know, we we have what you should plan, it's it's an opportunity, if there are things that are too short, um so say.
Yeah, I would, I would like for us to consider. What is it now? Suzanne, not, not R G W, what is it? Since they did help. Put together the anti-racism framework that we started with. To just level set us and see maybe where we moved away from the original plan and. Scoop us back into place. And then maybe help with putting together a plan for us for the new structure going forward.
That leads me to a question that China both for the executive director and. Goes to strategic priorities and and standing. Um David Self was very invested in the Harwood method, and we haven't heard much of that in the last, well, since COVID really. Um and we put a great deal of investment in staff time and the money into the Harvard method and looking outward. And how are we integrating that into our current thinking?
Well, I I I was not trained in Harvard, but I know the staff was, and I know, I know that was the part that we did. Um I I hear it referenced, I feel like it's still used, the parts that I understand, but again, I haven't been trained in it. So it hasn't totally gone away, I know we still use pieces of it, so it wasn't, we're not. Um it does kind of inform kind of the way we put things together sometimes, in terms of just what you said, like the planning. And how we structure and how we um arrive, so there's still pieces of it still there.
One of the interesting things that both Matt and I were on the board when we went, went at Harvard. Uh I went through the Harvard training and, as I reflected upon it. The whole anti-racism was never even a component that we talked about there, was we were looking outward. Didn't really look at that, and I'm just wondering if we could take some of those Harvard tools. And as we look at the anti-racism, because I think that probably the squad. Staff have had that Harvard training and David was so committed to it. And I just was wondering if it's still.
But so I, and I wasn't here, so I'm just trying to make sure I understand, when the equity and. Is created, did that come out of committee or did that come out of the? Um Rashida Blackberry, like, did that come about?
That came from deciding that that was going to be a strategic initiative.
They created a committee to like.
I don't need to be a committee that discussed what the priorities and the goals of that initiative would be. And then how that should be collected in. Staff internally and then from there, along that staff position positions. To formulate the plans, programs, what have you, that would then infuse. The internal, external structure for the anti-racism initiative into. The internal and external library.
And the work committee was made up of.
Yeah.
Staff or community members. That's a very good question.
Okay, sorry, that was, I was, I was just definitely like. No, I think that's like a. It's that with changes, but I don't understand how things seem to be always, so that's why I'm asking that question. Cause I guess, like, to me, it's hard to understand a change without going through them, like that committee that created or like influenced so deeply. Um or like.
Probably we're not changing anything, it's just. It's kind of hugging back to where it started. And we're missing that piece right now, I'm not changing anything.
Okay.
If the the job description, if I look at the director job description, everything I'm asking is already there, um it's not changing anything, it's just. Um adding it back to the equation, I feel like there, it's missing. It's not like, really, like it is, it is, it's, and it's, you know, a lot of factors, like I said, it was COVID. Um the director retired, who had the horrible training, he put on this. Well, yeah, they had an interim for a while, I mean, so it's just, it's getting back to the stuff that's already there.
Okay.
That's all it is, and if we don't stop paving, we don't stop the programming, it's just putting it back in. The things that we already said that we want.
Everything you've said is something like my old team dealt with the lab, where it's like, you have it be its own separate thing, do you embed it, do you do both? We did both, it sounds like you're doing both, or that's what you're gonna work for. Um I think it's just like the process is so important, so then like making sure that we know as a board what we're signing off on and. Um or providing feedback to.
Did you have questions?
No, I was gonna say, yeah, to the point, I think this is one of the really important things, the decentralizing could. It it's something, it it. It's at a really critical juncture, because when you, when you move it through, it needs to be the ghost throughout and not becomes a part. Of the the fabric in a more intentional way, or the meaning that it just appears. And so I think, if I'm hearing you right, the the goal is. Pushing it into our fabric. But what we need to continue to see is somehow that that movement and concern and how that. Does is probably a great piece that we need to maybe discuss in our strategic plan. That, that would be sort of my thought, that I would like to think a little bit more intentionally about what. Those milestones look like, because. It's not like, oh, we moved ten steps ahead on anti-racism, but we. Each uh a small child to that. Right, you know, it's hard to 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 measure that. Um and so I I I I kind of want to think really, I mean, this would be my. Would be to really think about that at an intentional level, about what those milestones could be, and I feel like. I need to research that a little bit.
Well, we won't be alone, we we already started from here, and so we'll, we'll have some ideas for you for that, um. How we make sure that it doesn't. Yeah, it's not gonna be something like, oh, remember we did that back in twenty twenty, that's not my goal, that's not what I'm doing, that's not what I'm doing here about. Um and then the department has not gone away, it's still a revolution team, still reports to me, um so that shows the importance of it. Um and then, you know, again, this is one of the things, you want a strategic plan, it's getting its own budget, that's a bit that we haven't had yet.
Yeah.
Um so that. Don't worry, I'm not trying to do anything, um but just watching, I said, I would do this, my other thing, I've watched the first six months, see. Kind of how things were going, seeing what pieces to build, um and this is, um this is my observation. In terms of those two departments being public facing, um and needing that public support. And it doesn't say that they stopped doing stuff and then everything just becomes about animals, and we don't talk about tricks anymore, we've never seen anything. Uh that, that just is not.
Yeah.
Um but um. While we do those things, and and they happen, again, they happen, and then they they will happen with how it was, and they'll continue to happen. But to add to that, the things that we need to do internally, so then we have people at the desk. We have people meeting people that don't look like them, we know how to talk to people, we know how to, um we know how to pick our flexions, we continue to, like, we. Mindful of that, we we have opportunities for people, we have opportunities to hire people, that's all these. Um we have the training, we have the language, and we have the understanding, and we have the existence, where we can discuss. And understand that, that's, that's what we're gonna get to, that's already what we said and we're about, that's what we're there. Uh we just need some actual things that, and that's what I see, that's been to say, one of those various reasons I said, it's just, you know, as I said, COVID. There was a big staff change, um so here we are on another side of the obvious to predict. Um and you'll see, it'll begin here, I promise.
And touch us for my own clarification, you're talking about the the Harwood Institute for Public Innovation, about you're encouraging the Harwood. Yep, okay, just wonder, we love it and understand that. I'm sure who they dig. I mean, they're looking for some library in my community. I figured I'd usually really academic, like, see what their working page is like. Do my own research.
It's just so tricky, I I mean, I think some of my um concern comes from a friend that worked at a library. That is touted as one of the most anti-racist places, and like, she's a woman of color and is mistreated pretty badly, and so I just. I wanna always make sure that what we're um like, programming externally is one thing, programming internally is a whole nother piece. And so it's the nice work supporting our staff and and all the way.
And I've been Harvard to do some training that did not reflect the training that they were doing. So they've had all the. Trainers to kind of do.
Yeah.
And yeah, so when I hear Harvard, a little. I'm not sure.
I have pretty strong feelings about Harvard myself. I, yes. All right, are there any other questions about staff reports, or are you ready to go on to finance?
Did we get the staff change?
Yeah, I just.
She only wasn't in the staff changes.
Think he was.
He's in there, he's under the terminations.
No.
No, he wasn't.
I thought he was in last.
Oh, yeah, that was.
Could have sworn I checked and I didn't see it there either, cause that was a bit of a surprise to me. And I know, I thought close session about personnel, so I don't know what you were covering, and I don't. So I just don't know what to say, but I I do just wanna ask the questions about the deputy position and like how that came to be. Um you mentioned like it was. Like Lori with Director Programs, right, and so.
Public Service and. She has the already the most square footage, so to speak, of staff that she's in charge of. Um we used to have a, this is a record position here at the park. Um so to return to that, so it's, it's not something that's born to um this library, right? I think as we grow staff, I think that's helpful to me to have a deputy, so um if I'm not here. Um I can, there is someone in charge, I remember the first time, I I had to do something, and I said, I was in charge, they said, everybody's in charge. It's helpful, it's helpful to have a point person to go to, it's helpful to have somebody to sign the checks, so they can know, so. All that's in there too, to have somebody stand in that position, and then we had a long-term person with Lori. Um and then adding those two, so it's not just, it's also adding more work, so it's not just. Oh, you're a very nice person, um yes, you can have this, it's it's also additional duties added to the position. That increases square footage, coupled with um just the long, her being interim for a long time, the experience was there. Um and being at this library for a really long time and being in the building for forty years.
Yeah.
Um it was a natural progression. Um to the Deputy Director, to return to having that position.
But so it sounds like her, her role is mostly the same, like, it's mostly the same plus the freedom suite.
And and the um community engagement team. And being my official, like, when I'm not here, this is the person in charge. Um so it's, it's added responsibility. Return into that position that we had before, that we didn't have. Especially since we have more staff than we've ever had in like a really long time.
I wasn't curious, but Matt, do we, was there a specific reason why we moved away from having a deputy?
No, I think it was just, you know, the the nature of how, cause we've, we've, we've had. Moved away from, moved back to, moved away from it, it's kind of, you know, fluctuated. As the general, like, staffing in in the library and like the year to year. I don't wanna say it's like a, like a one in, one year out, one year in, one year out, but kind of it's like. Where the strategic plan is taking us in terms of like moving towards vision. Dee Brennan uh had a deputy um for some time. Jim Madigan wasn't. Oh, I don't know if you, technically it was like as a, as the deputy, as the. You know, deputy uh director in 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 that same title, but. In many ways he was, but it was just, it's kind of, it's kind of fluctuated as. The approach to our programming and our services has shifted and the responsibilities and the workload. So it's kind of just been. How that director feels, um I know B Brennan had. Full-time without one and with one, specifically she had one time, she had two sort of deputy directors, one. That was uh kind of like this, the. Like a billy position who was generally, like, I think Jim Madigan kind of handling the finances and HR piece. And then someone who was handling the front-facing um services. That generally is, sounds like is hand, is falling under a boring. Circulation, counter, community events, programming, all of those pieces, so. It it is. It's it's kind of gone with the flow of. Depending on where we're at.
My understanding kind of was that when David changed it, it was more of a horizontal. Like leadership model, a vertical leadership model. Um, so I'm just wondering how that kind of shift back, like, thinking is around that.
I feel like it's still horizontal, so like. The leadership team does a report to Lori, they still report to me, Lori still reports to me, it's just. Something you said about sort of was the person, it just gives clarity to, um. A, a person to be second in charge. That was a, a piece of the making too, and then also when you have so much of, I've learned some word square footage again, of the staff that reports to you. Um, I, I served in that role. Uh, I've been a deputy director before, I, I was assistant director, and then my time of action is a deputy director, so also happy to experience okaying the deputy director. And supporting, um, my director at the time, um, influenced my thinking too, so, um. I, I think it's a good thing to have where we are at this point, in terms of like, we're twenty years of this building, so we got some building projects coming up, um, that I, I meant to work on, um. Yeah. Locations, things we wanna do at different locations, uh, we have, now we have, um, we're infusing anti racism to the, the things we do, so somebody who. Um, has all those responsibilities, I, I think they should not only just be a director, but they should be a deputy director, and like I said, it helps me also. Um, in the one that I do, uh, I can also, you know, if it's something public facing, I can emails from everything, I, I think people did, um, at the front desk. And like checking out what's and putting it away, that help, I could say, okay, if it's public service related, you know, you may speak to here is my, thank you for, um. Contacting me, let me connect you to my deputy director, and then she can take it along with it, and then that gets people answers quicker than get things moving along, so that's. If that answers any of your question about the change.
I think also, you know, you know, talking, you know, speaking about that horizontal piece, I think when. If you think back to when David told us he was. Retiring, you know, retiring from here, and we had the question of, okay, so who's gonna be in charge? And I, you know, the idea that, you know, they, you know, it was like, well, we have enough staff that don't. Need a interim director was floated. There was a lot of unease in the room. I, I felt around the board table about the idea of like, not having like, a point staff person, like the staff, like, all, like, the. The horizontal team would just be able to handle it, so I think that there is a value of being able to say, there is, not to say that you are resigning.
No, please don't.
Um, but like that idea of, there is a point person, you are not here, and, you know, there is. I think, you know, having a clear. You know. You, you know, person who's in the building, able to be that point of contact.
And has knowledge, so, you know, if, if, I can ask Lori something if I don't know about, um. From when I was here the first time, the gaps that I have, that's, you know, it's a, it's lucky that we have somebody who is still here, that she's not retired. Um, that I can, um, just have in that seat to support me and the library in that way. So all that, what is the thinking, what thinking about this? Um, and the people I've got from staff is kind of that, exactly, it's good to have a point person. Um, yes, they can handle it, but it's the same thing of why I now have an assistant, um, I think David didn't have one, but others did, I, like, I appreciate that. Now, when I first got here, the answer was, well, we'll all do that piece. Well, we have very capable, smart people here, I, you know, I don't, you know, I, they don't have to do every piece of every job they do, and. To do what they have to do, and do those things that I need, that are the admin support things. And so, it was like, you know, you can do that. You do these stuff, so, um, just, the work is, is, is different even from what David, I, I feel like. Um, it's more intense, um, people are coming back, or the pandemic is over, and, and, I mean, they're hitting, they're, they were here, you see the stats. You see what we're doing, we're not one library that is, like, oh, I wish the people would come back, oh, what are we gonna do together? That was, that was some of the program, and like, people still talking about that, like, we're hitting it. Um, and we have, we do have a willing staff, we saw in the audit too, so if, if that all needs support and. Um, thinking about how we can. Maneuver and change as we need it. That, we had this talking, we, when I did the chat, like, we don't say a sad class, I'm allowed to do the same thing, we have to change into that. And as I see it and watch, um, it's always very intentional with thought, for what's best for the library, so. That, that's what I've been kind of sitting quietly doing, I didn't wanna do it unintentionally or just on a limb, um, not being here a long time, so. This is how I arrived, so I did wanna put on gear, and it's in the full session, so we can have more of a conversation, so we're not talking about personal things. Um, so we can be respectful of time here and talking out with me, so.
Yeah.
Uh, I asked him that I added to it, so that's what I said.
Yeah, I, I wanna feel like people weren't uneasy, because I wasn't there for that, but like, I think that's a pretty typical reaction anytime something's different, I knew when you do, so like. I know you're always a big proponent of like, you don't always do, but you, you know, you just, you. Trying to change the status quo is never comfortable or easy, um, and so I, I never want that to be a reason why you don't listen to something. Um, but yes, I went forward to close session.
So moving on to financial reports. We have, uh. On page sixty-nine. We have our financial report summary. And then. Bank reports, any questions? Right in those before we get into our resolution of disbursements.
It looks like we were over the fifty percent mark on, um. Subs, support services, I'm guessing again that those are like subscriptions, and we're paying a little bit ahead and.
And the prices are very good, it's more, and we're talking about that for the next quarter cycle.
I was gonna say, I got, um. I got my budget bringing. Yeah, all the subscription, especially.
Yeah.
And we knew this was gonna happen, I'm guessing the electronic subscriptions that pre-COVID were not quite so premium. At a.
Yeah.
And now they're, they're all skyrocketing because, you know.
That's something we talked about in the ALA discussion, that, um, a lot of, so actually staff went, and they were talking about like, what can we do as. A field to not be the last one, I'm not sure what the answer was, because I know, I mean, what else am I gonna have? It's not like there's many different ones, there's, um, a few that hold the power, and they know we got the buyer, and now it's in the van, so. Um, it's, it's, yeah, it's wrong, but in spite of that, it's like we're about to do one percent extended, so we keep it pretty low, at a certain point, so.
It's just something to think about, because I, I know if those things are getting more expensive. Then it will follow that there will start to be alternatives, and then do we. Want to get those in addition, or are you going to swap things out, and, and there's a cost to the change management in that as well? So, again, having the budget running on, do we need to start thinking about putting. More funds to more electronic resources or those kinds of subscriptions to get ready for.
Yes.
Some of those changes.
Yes, that is being anticipated, um, our team is working on our budget ends now. Uh, and ask, so that is definitely in the conversation. We also talking about, um, being, um, or she especially is, um, really doing this, um, just talking about like, what are we using, what are we not using? Um, because there's, and that goes for internal, because we use a platform, so it's such good just that, that place. So what's nice to have, um, that's our purpose, I heard you touched on using, so we're gonna be very, like, disturbing about that because the prices are so high. Um, and then getting higher.
We've had, yeah, we've had that discussion with staff before, search staff. Basis in the past. Music streaming one that we had a year, years ago that we dropped because it is. It was, they were raising prices and it was not getting a lot of use, and even though I really liked it a lot, and I. Still gonna, every time I see you, Freego. I know you gotta say Freego.
I'm missing, I just can't cross a wonderful picture of your predecessor, David, so reading the New York Times, print edition. Here in my area. I thought, boy, that's a good picture.
So, yeah, I think we've, uh, it, it's one of those things where we, it's not, it won't be the first time we've. We had to reassess virtual subscriptions as we go on there, because it's just. It's such a, such a, such a racket, it's just like, you know, they, they know, they, you know, it's. I just don't understand, like, publishers don't. Yeah. Like Hollywood virus, yeah, right? Um, so, uh, if there's no other questions about the reports, we will move on.
Um, facility supplies, is that, you know, we're saying, we're fifty-one percent, you said we have some things that are fifty-nine percent, many things that are, I'm just wondering. Like. How we're lowering those?
Well, some, some lines, and forgive me if I don't look too deep, I'm, I'm. I'm confessing, both of my clients before are not here, but just something, like, we, so one thing we did is, um. Speaking of equity, like, we, um, all, all the. All the female leadership team shared office before, in one office, which I saw, that's not adequate at all, so like, one thing we did, we, we actually. You should come take a peek at it, we built the office in the back out of glass. Um, and then we relocated some people, so things have been painted, um, that have baths across too, so that's, you know, um. And this building is twenty years old, so we, we have some big tickets, things that are coming up, so some, some stuff is a little bit over the line. Other thing that is gonna be over too is, and I, I, I remember this was mentioned last time, the, um. There's all the training I talked about, all the conferences, um, because, uh, one got moved to this year. Um, but we have, um, we, um, if you recall, we did get some. Beneficiary funds, so we look to those to kind of bolster, so we can complete out the year, but we're also gonna keep that in mind for next year to. Kind of, um, bolster that too, because we want to keep setting people to things, and there's gonna be, next year is P L A two, so that's another big. Public Library Association Conference, that's another big, and also I still want to make sure anybody doesn't say this, so that's far expensive, so. Um, yes, some lines are overspanned, admittedly, I think that's even in there, but, um, some of them are under, so that's keeping us.
It was actually like under one that I was asking, the facilities supplies and facilities services. Um, like, is that something? That's under or just waiting for the other shoe?
Oh.
Um. It's. Seventy-one.
I'm sure it won't stay under.
Right.
That's sure will say.
Yeah, and so when I saw facilities, um, thinking about the cooler, is that like the?
The chiller.
The chiller.
That was, that is.
Didn't that fall under capital?
Yeah.
Oh, that's under capital.
That definitely is not the supplies, but yeah. Stay tuned, I'm sure it won't stay under. Um, I don't know if that, if you wanna speak to that, is Matt, so then.
Yeah, I mean.
Certainly. We have such a better expert right here.
Um, the chiller, a, a lot of our capital projects are coming in the second half of the year, we're gonna end the third quarter and the fourth quarter. Um, so on the capital side, we'll see a lot of expenditures as we get through August, September, October. Um, and then for the supplies, um, we've been, I was working with Elizabeth when we first got here, um. And looking at things like housekeeping supplies, that was a line. Um, that neither one of us, me being new and Elizabeth being new, facilities, didn't really know what to do with, uh, our current. Cleaning company supplies, um, their own cleaning supplies, and that's something we historically budgeted for in-house, so we've been trying to figure out where that. Budget line should live, uh, going forward, um, and then a few other things like, uh. Oh, what's the name of the line? Um, equipment parts that, uh, we actually have some expenditures out now and more things, because. We get around to projects towards the end of the year, those, those lines are gonna continue to be expended, so. Or under for now. And I'm happy about that for now, because.
Right, that's why.
Yeah, because things are coming, so, um, but yeah.
And do we know with the chiller, do we have a, is there been any updates on the number expected for that?
No, we're, we're, so the, the budget numbers should still be holding, um, spoke with Hayes Mechanical, there's. There's nothing new or unexpected, and we are just waiting for delivery from carrier and the install, so. Fingers crossed.
And we're just, that's slated for at the end of August.
Yeah, it's the end of September, end of September.
Where is some wood?
Thank you.
Technology, is there an opportunity for getting government grants by using new technology or?
It is an upgrade in refrigerant, it is an upgrade in control and operation, and it's going to be an upgrade in, um. When we put the energy valve on, and when we do the next upgrade, um, we're gonna see upgrade in a lot of things, so we have. Um, various variable speed condenser motors, we're going to have, uh, variable speed compressors, so, um. When it is under demand and, and calling for cooling, it's gonna have a lot better control than full on or full off, so. Uh, as far as, uh, grant funding, we are working with, um, Complete Temperature and ROM Building Integrations. Um, as well as comment to secure funding for these projects as they exist and as we continue.
Do we have any other large capital projects that we already know about?
We have some projects that were budgeted, um, that are ongoing, things like. Uh, carpeting, floor replacement, the, uh, new office and admin, um, some of the school room project updates that we're doing. Um, and then the, the big one is the chiller and the HVAC.
Anything at Maze?
Uh, Maze, um, we had budgeted some flooring replacement maze that we are working on, up. As we speak.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right. Then, uh.
So just, just to close a little bit on what I was, what I was saying there, thank you, um, it's just that, um. When we're looking at, some of these are over and some are under. Like, the unders are gonna come, um. So are the overs, do we have anywhere for them to go down, or like, are we gonna be good this year with our budget?
We'll be, I, I mean, we'll be good, it's. I go back to what I was saying about the budget, um, it's just an estimate of what you think is gonna be spent. Hopefully we, it, we won't necessarily get it perfect every time. But the objective is to not over the budget, um, some will be under, some will be over, and then we look at that for the next year and see, like, okay. You know, like, it's, like, we just talked about all the digital things, maybe that means we need more Wi-Fi coverage, so that's something they would invest in. Or, you know, we see people using digital, okay, unless we need to get that way, or, um. There you go, so that's how we look at it, it's, you know, that'll, that'll shape what we do next year, as long as we stay and don't go over as a whole. Is the goal.
Right.
Um, and then we look at, you know, like, okay, what if we way over?
And that looks like, yeah, yeah.
Okay, good, yeah, I, and I'm saying that based on, like, when I was looking at the report, that we're at fifty-one percent, it's. That was in June, that's almost perfectly half of what it is spent, so I feel like we're in a good, we're in good shape, and then from the audit report, uh. You know what they said, everything was lining up, it was. So I feel like it's a good shape.
Okay, thanks.
Based on those.
All right, uh, now going on to our, uh, disbursements, uh, uh, journal, are there any questions that's beginning on page eighty-three? There's no. Questions, can, is there a motion to approve, so moved, is there a second?
Second.
By ten second and by virginia, are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, those who favor say aye. Those opposed say nay, it is approved. Okay, additional reports, I go.
We did not meet in July, July is the month off, or I go.
Correct.
Second week in September and August.
Thank you, uh, Carr, does that meet in July?
Planet Green. Planet Green had a Green Town Climate Equity Conference in, uh, June. The way Planet Green works is that their meetings are almost about four or five days after our, our board meetings, so. This will be, you know, June or fourth. Four or five days after our board meeting, so this will be June fourth, um, and. There's this entity called. Or C, and I always forget what it stands for, but it is the Cross-Community Climate Collaboration. And it is uh an opportunity for. Both partners and surrounding communities to talk. And it's actually, as far as climate uh things and Planet Green, it's very robust. And we're working with Bellwood, um, Broadview, Neighborhood. Um, in this, in the same kinds of ways that you librarians work together. As a community, I think that both in climate action and in library work, I think we're doing a really good job of. Reaching out to to neighborhoods. Um, and we learn this as well. I think it's it's kind of like a a. Planet Green Swan, a city work. And I'm very glad that that uh Matt has is also taking part in Planet Green, so that when we think of. Like grant opportunities and with best practices. And we also uh planning toward the new community rec center. And everybody's raving about this, even though it doesn't have a swimming pool. But uh. It's uh it's just been a really uh interesting thing to see how it it goes. And I don't know how many of you have been with a. Community rec center, but really it's quite something and the fact that it's uh both is carbon neutral. And the fact that it can be a warming center. Because it's got a backup battery. So if the neighborhood needed. Find a warm place, that would be a, but uh, I think that the park, the park district working with uh Planet Green. Was very, very effective, and I think we can use that as an example as we think about other initiatives that we do with the library.
Thank you. Uh, friends.
For me, it was yesterday, um, there was this little book fair that we, a fabulous success. And, um. And lots of positive feedback. By and large, um, with the fact that it was not in the high scholarship. Um, there was some discussion about, uh. All the amazing volunteers and who might be the volunteer of the year. And I was really heartened by the awesome work of our volunteers. Uh, and the next meeting is September. If it's September, um, do you not quote me on the date? And uh, did I, did I miss anything?
You missed the money.
Oh, I was going to say, there were dollars, there were dollars, there were dollars.
Let me add to it. So last year, it was, um. In twenty twenty, they made ninety thousand dollars. This year, they need twenty nine thousand, four hundred and forty dollars. So, um, they went up to a thousand dollars plus, um, fifty two percent increase over last year. Um, they also had it, the most, so the most things they had, I thought were nonfiction books. Um, the biggest thing that went was children's books. Um, and it's, I don't know if you all read the ten people sell it all, they changed how they did it. So it wasn't all private for this room, everybody's sweaty. It was, it was by genre. So children's books, it was in children's, it was nonfiction on the third floor, especially it was out here. Um, and they got a lot of positive feedback on that. They also, um, used, uh, most of the transaction, I think they said like seventy six. Or seventy four percent of the transactions were with Square. So they really appreciated having the square. Because people who has cash anymore, I'm like, I have cash in my purse right now. I'm like, what is that? Even that great stuff, I don't know what it is. Uh, so they would happen to have that. It 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 costs them a little in expenses, but not that much. We get a nonprofit rate. So it's maybe out of that twenty nine thousand dollars is five hundred dollars in the fees. They ask people to round it up and in some cases, so if you spend, I don't know, two thousand fifty cents, they ask people to like to make it three dollars. To offset the cost, a lot of people did that. And on the last day, they did the ten dollar bag, they sold like a thousand, something like that on the last day. Because this is, this is Friday. If you were here on Friday, it was in that house. I had an exciting risk managing meeting at Gallagher in Raleigh Meadows. So I had an unfortunate, um. Thing of trying to come back here and park, and I probably started about fourteen times. Somebody texts me, they're like, are you coming in? I was like, I'm I'm here. I just can't get in. So I could have the property to have. We just left the gate up, so nobody had to pay. It's to keep the good enough, so we won't fall into the traffic jam. Uh, we did it instead of my staff to park. Offsite, so we could leave spaces open. So, um, it was, it was really a great success. Um, we had all, we had all the park work and stuff.
Since we're doing it in house now, we can do them more often. Is there talk of us trying to do this more than once a year? And maybe leaving some other spaces for our executive director to be?
No, but there might be another opportunity for them to do something else. So I'm going to have a conversation with Ross. I will. I will, um, jump the shark here and talk about here before I talk to him, but there may be some other things I could do that are popular. Uh, because they had so many really great volunteers that are eager to, um, like, just serve the library. Um, and they, and they, I've got new members too. Like, somebody actually showed up at that was after, and she was like, that should be on board right now. Can I come now? They're like, the vote is in September. So everybody was, it was one of just like, I have lots of boards. Um, I'd love to help. Um, so they actually, you know, recruited me up the sale too. So we have some things. Uh, in the queue, maybe, but it's not a book sale, it's something else. I suggest you stay tuned.
On Sunday, did we end up with a lot of stuff that had to go to? Be smashed in the paper mill?
Considerably less. So this year, they had two hundred seventy boxes. It has something like four hundred last year that we left. So, um, for people just bought a lot more, um, I think they said the high, somebody said like five hundred plus dollars. Of books, um. So they had less, so the sale went really well. So they didn't have to fund the stuff, um. But they used every box that they bought. So they just said, you have to use the boxes very gingerly, because that's another expense that. That is blowing up as costly, so. A great success, um, and we really love having you here. This one, I'd say everybody activated here. I don't know what it was like at the high school.
I was gonna say, Matt, can you remember from when we used to make? When it was at the high school? I think it's sub ten?
No, um, it was in the teens, um, but I mean, that was in that. Because they do have to pay. You know, some some expenses for the high school.
It sounds very expensive to use them.
Yeah. Because we also, like, there's also. You know, the un, you know, the, you know, the costs of transporting. Like everything that we were still, that we're still in here, over to there, cutting out and everything. So maybe there's. You know, you know, we lose space here, you know, for people to use and stuff like that while it's being staged. But there's other, there's trade offs, obviously, with that, with all of this stuff. So just a matter of which is, what are the trade offs and? The enumerated and unenumerated costs that are, that the friends. Are willing to incur for this, because this is their operation. I mean, we benefit from it, but it's their show.
It is.
A criticism from photography club, if they have not been informed and we were having a book. Yeah, but but it seems to me that nobody should expect that. Well, we've always done it this way. We didn't think we needed to. Make an appointment.
The, yes, the, the completely secret and unpopular size for the fair.
What are the, what really like the impact on staff for having it here instead of having it offsite?
Well, I mean, it was it was busier. It was definitely busy. Friday was a busy day, they know it, um, but. I I think dividing it up, I I walked around and it, and it didn't really impact the service. Having it segmented in what it went with. So we didn't have a, and we have so much lovely space here. So like, up here, it was in the. It was in the, um. Negative space of the empty space that's right up here. So you could still go right to the desk, you can still check out fine. Uh, but it was, it was a home. Uh, I went to children's, the children's people, they had the desk, they were waiting on people, and then my children's has a huge space. And so we're just in the space over off to the side. So I mean, um, I saw a lot of people walking around to like, whoa, like they hadn't been here a long time. So you had some of those. And, um, that's another thing they talk about, to just people kind of just walk around and just kind of checking out the library that hadn't been in a while, but. I haven't heard like a negative impact on the staff or anything coming from their managers up to me or anybody stopping. I mean, it was. It was, it was part of the elephant parking. That was fair. You didn't get here and you didn't stay here, um, and I think that. Other places, like I said, I have to do it. And it wasn't that bad. It was maybe two bucks, maybe a park. Um, maybe like four hours right there.
And were there, um, was there an increase in people getting library cards or checking books out?
Question, you know, I will call us and ask them about those days. I would love to go back.
Right? Because it, you know, it seems like it. It is a weighing of, of, you know, some kind of. Non-numerated costs on staff. And inconveniences and just. Crowd, and that everything to having that volume of crowd. But having people come to the library, we were at the farmer's market and had. Flyers for it. And a lot of people, when they'd see it, they'd go, oh, oh, that's now. Oh, we're going to go there right now. They're like, it's not the high school, go to the library. Um, but there was a positive.
Yeah.
Public response to it. So I was just curious how. How it was perceived by staff being here.
And it's not seven years, as I understand.
Yeah. Like when I walked in here last year, I was like, get me out of here. That was, wow, that was something else. That was, so I'm hoping it was better.
And then, yeah, and then these people. Our public service people that are used to that, you get ebbs and flows. So if he had, we have like a big problem in here, you got to get that. So like we, that's, that's kind of like your public service life. So I didn't, like I said, I haven't heard anybody say, oh my God, it was unbearable. It walked me around. It it seemed like it was easy to navigate. I really liked that idea that they had figured out. I think that maybe made a little bit of difference from maybe than how they did it last year. Um, so you could still do your day to day stuff, but yeah, you did like a lot of people, this was not supposed to be on Friday. Because it was, it was crazy. In a good way.
Right. And if it brought more people in the library, that's good. One, um, last thought of it. I was at, on vacation one time, I visited a library, actually in a very small community. Um, but they had a permanent. Um, tent up for the books that were left over from the sale, that people could just come and take. Um, and I thought that was an interesting approach. You know, to have. Um. And I don't know where or how it would be possible here, but I thought it was a.
We tried that a few several years ago, pre-cook, and I didn't want to be a set of shelves for it and.
You know, this was outside. If it's mostly nonfiction, we're going to have to find some very specific people who. You know, those things that might take some of our librarian expertise to find those people. But I would agree, like, if if we had a bunch of children's books or something left over, it would be. No work to give those to outreach or something to to go put places.
Well, Chris, I just connected us to a very good, uh, contact who does read. So we are going to start taking donations year round. Thank you for saying that, connection. I can't think of the name.
Our future reading?
Yes, well, I don't know if that's a name, but they, they, so we are going to be taking donations year round, and then they. Rededicate them, reallocate them to places that need them. So if you don't have the tents outside. Um, it is not just a little bit of, well, we do have another, um.
Yeah, and he's like local, he went to a park, and like, he started this nonprofit, and it's all ages. So he wants to like create an online shop that like. Helps kind of treat for you, but about free. That's really, it's cool. I can't think of his name, but that organization is our future read.
No, it was that young lady you introduced us to, that was on your block, I think. And she's the one who's taking our book donations. Okay, that is Colleen.
Maybe, I think. That's what it was. I was sharing about our future reads, and you were like, we already have someone through Colleen. That's what it was.
That's what it is.
Yeah, there's so many out there.
Yes.
So moving on, we don't, we're unfinished business. We don't have any closing minutes to approve at this time. Uh, we have the resolution law I G for the parking.
Okay, so. I've been in the conversation with the village about this. We we just talked about the parking down there. Um, well, we talked about bringing staff back in. Almost, well, we we standardize the working mode or the remote work to thirty two eight. So one thing that the staff said is, well, what about the parking? We just said we have a lot more people here. We used to have, you have seventy four spaces downstairs, and I, and and put in that's for. Handicap spaces, um, so it's, you know, we have a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty some staff between three buildings that work at all three buildings too, so. Uh, if you do the map on that, it's, it's just not a park and our parks for the patrons. So, um, staff gave me that and said, could we look at that parking, the avenue garage again? You don't know where that is, that's like behind Candy Topia, behind. Over lives, um, it's like a block, a half a block away. Um, and so, uh, we had an I G that had no date on it, and it was, it just kind of died. And so I've been talking to Kevin Jackson, lead me to Sean, I can't think of Sean last night, in the village, who's the parking manager. And so, um, we crafted this, we worked together and practiced I G and it's updated. So this one is a five year plan. Uh, they're giving it, so they're kind of giving it, they're kind of losing what they're giving. They're charging us at a very just 20s rate. So the 200 rate is like two hundred fifty eight dollars per quarter for for parking space. This is like the super, super employee discount rate, like, it's like an hourly rate. Plus like maybe a little bit more discount. And so the prices you see on here are quarterly, and it comes to about eight grand a year. It's just, I mean, it's not terrible. It's not going to kill us. Um, one part that we got stuck on, um, this is, um, a little different version, the one that was in your packet. Because I battled them about, I don't use one battle. We had a, we had a, um, an energetic discussion about the line. Um, that is, if you look on the bottom of the first page, the library shall eliminate the equivalent. Number of parking spaces, uh, for employees at the main library. And I was like, what do you mean? Like, we can't do that. We, what do you want me to throw an X on the parking spaces? Like, I don't understand. So how was it like to me? And I was able to get over the hump. And so. In order to give us the discount, they have, they need to show that we are creating more spaces for patrons. And so they're like, we're not going to, there's not going to be, we used to come over and count the space, and there's no way to track it. You know, we have a bar, you go in, you park. The parking sites are not marked. We don't know the difference between if it's a patient or a staff member. So it's this, it's it's in spirit is what they mean by that, that if they will be eliminated. Where it it was in the last I G A, it was the same one we had, we did eliminate these spaces. Like, to take this literally. So I said, okay, that's what you said. If you take that out, you said I can charge the corporate rate, and you don't have to do anything. So I was like, um, okay, I get it. So. I just want you to be aware of that, because when I read it over, it gave me pause, but it's not, it doesn't mean that we're doing that. It's just trying to say that we're going to, by doing this, we free up. Twenty five spaces for patrons.
Is it twenty five specific spots that are going to? Like, have a little flag that says for library staff only, or is it just? They're going to have a card that they can swipe to get in.
To the avenue space?
Yeah.
The way he explained it to me was, um, you, they do the license plate, so it will be specified by the staff's cars. So then when you go in, you know, your plate after you register, and then like there, whatever they have to let you in, that's how you get in. And so it will be specific by the person. So it's during working hours, it's not twenty four seven. So if you just, you know, here on the weekend. Um, you know, you're not supposed to use it. But again, that was in the last I G A as well. So, um.
Wait, sorry, who's selecting who goes there? I was saying, because I'm trying to take a stroller in and look there. People's not the most handicap record. So, and I know our facilities, I think, are a little bit more impactful of disability access, at least here for main library. So how are we deciding? Who is parking there? Like, are we taking volunteers or?
He's thinking, asking. I wasn't, as I say, I wasn't going to sign.
That's, that's how it was performed, it's against asking for people to sign up too.
Because staff wants me and said, look, we, okay, we need some more parking over there. So I know people aren't interested. We probably don't need twenty five initially, but I also did a little bit back and say, can I have some more? I've been got to write this all over again. This will be more than enough. For the next five years. And then what I like about it too, it's not forever. It does go up incrementally, and if it's not working, you can stop. Like, nobody takes up on this offer. You know, because sometimes people say something, then you actually do it. It's like, okay, didn't take advantage of it. But I think people will. It's. If you, if you can walk and you don't have to do it, but if you, it's not, it's not a bad walk. It's pretty close. I mean, you can stop and get some ice cream and some candy on the way here and do some. I mean, you can stop and get some ice cream and some candy on the way here and do some, you know, but at least you get some steps in. Um. So, you know, I think you're supporting local businesses. There's some positives to it. Um, and you know, you. That lot, as I understand it, is never very full. Um, so.
And we can opt out before twenty twenty seven.
It looks like you can. I feel like I read something that said, you know what, like, let's review. We have high people using it. There's no reason why you should think. Keep doing this. We we can pop that. Or somehow, um, that's, um, they said, well, the rapture is going on. Imagine if people aren't using it more, because that's people who turn it to work as we have and uh, for the most part. Um, you know, if if they think that we've got better. They could have bought and say, okay, this is a work for us. We both have a leisurely access and we can. Say, you know, they say it's not working that well. We can say it's not, we need some changes.
And the staff that'll be parking certain courses in Avenue Garage, right? It's just that. And I know people still watch when people get out of cars, whether they go into the staff entrance or the public entrance at the garage. So they're watching.
There's people, there are people who watch that.
Wait, what?
They need to get a. Now, I'm sorry, is that's like, we're, that's, I'm not, we're not kidding.
People have said to me, well, there isn't any parking, because I see all those people going into the staff door. And I'm kind of going, cool. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, but this, it is the shit of parking. And so there's a discussion about that. I think they didn't want really clear. They're like, isn't, isn't that parking off where your staff to be? I was like, no, we share with the patrons too. So it's obviously to revisit, like, if you have a new village manager, they have a, they have a queue too. So it was, this is again, like, clear understanding of like.
Other parking options. I never read other parking options around here. I mean, money, which paying money to park your car to go to work. Not, not the best, or you're parking far away in the neighborhood where you're not guaranteed the kind of safety or security that you might be.
Right.
In a designated parking.
Right, this will be a no cost to the staff. Exactly. It would just be something that may absorb. And it says not horrible, so.
And it'll be specific staff. Like not, it will be specific staff.
Like a seven, we're not just signing up for, because it's, it's.
It'll be addressed to their specifically involved.
It is, yeah, like a, like a parking pass, you sign up for it down, uh, any of the garages downtown Chicago.
Have like two vehicles for the street?
Oh, I don't know. You know what? We could probably.
Family cars.
We could weigh that. If if say we have extras, that's something maybe to look at. If you have something to spare, once you ask somebody, this is an opportunity. That may be something we can consider. Um, sure. But it doesn't mean they can't park here. Because I said, you know, sometimes somebody might have a program. Sometimes they might have, they they might have to, you know, they might have food they're bringing in. They they park there. And I just said, I just wanna be transparent. I don't wanna go somewhere or or be, it is like, it it really doesn't mean that or not. We don't know what you do over there. He's just trying to say it's bringing up spaces for patients and we're sh- we're demonstrating that to the taxpayer. Whoever looks like this, that that's what we do. That is the spirit of what we're trying to do. So, um, so if it's, if this is okay with you, unless you have the edits, the next step would be on the thirty first, the circle. On the the village's board meeting for their resolution um, on thirty first of July. So this can happen pretty soon, um, unless you all have some change or something. If there's any changes, it's gonna take a little longer, but. Yeah, Sean was gracious enough to put this together, so it'll be timely so I can get it to you at this meeting. And so if we go on their meeting and then they can say, okay, yeah. It sounds good to us. And then, um, like I said, I wanna do that, and John was just before I signed something like this, so you all could see it.
As long as we're able to opt out, if it's not being used to.
Thirty days, because.
Mine. Well, actually, yeah. This is, you know, it's, I I really like the, the, I really think that. The production of draftmanship is very fair. If you wanna be really, really technical, four point two designation of different addresses, you might not note that, like. Changer, you know, um. Pursuant to notice of any other designated, so to notice may designate any further or different addresses to which. Subsequent notices, which is a previous, I'm sorry, communication, you know, communication shall extend. You might wanna note that we don't need a full amendment of the agreement should there be a change in. Staff, but that's actually completely up to you. I didn't notice your personal email was here. I hope you're still here in five years. Um, but. I don't know if that's something that you wanna note, and I don't know if that's something that's worth opening up that can forms. Um, there is not a section regarding waiver that was in the uh. I G A that we reviewed last month with regard to the. Boxes, and I don't know if that's something that we care about, because ultimately, I mean, this is too governmental, it's too governmental, I mean. So I'm not gonna stress. I will leave that up for the discretion of whether or not we want to note that a change in this does not require an amendment to be written.
It's, she's, she's getting.
I heard point two, but I didn't.
Four point two, it's four point two.
Thank you. Sorry, it's on page four, protection. Can I just talk so fast and I won't just step on some?
A little bit.
A little bit.
Really sorry.
The library will be closing in fifteen minutes.
Sure.
It's just, it's a matter of like changing of address of design needs.
Right. And it's just whether or not we feel that a change in the design need, the design need requires an amendment. Because they know we can make the change, but it would be, and that, like, hey. After you receive it forty eight hours, we're gonna just assume that it works, but maybe just a note saying that. You don't need to amend the agreement. I, it's a very, it's a like very nitpicky. Being overly, you know, thing. And so at the end of the day, this is an interregime agreement. We have a friendly relationship. It probably is not, is worth it, right? Like, it's also probably not worth it to know that. Um, you know, any of this brief, you know, uh, you know, section about, um. You have no personal liability to leave signatures of the agreement. Again, I really would hope that, you know, Kevin Jackson isn't going to come after. Justin Dixon and that the relationship with our village is never going to be that contentious. But those are just two minor things that I noticed.
I, given, given past agreements, I think I'm comfortable with this, with, with how it's for the draft.
Yeah. You, you know, you never, just say it's good. You know, you gotta, you gotta know, certainly.
Is there a motion to approve this I G A? Moved by Christina is there second, second? By Kevin, any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. Any abstentions? It is approved.
Okay, policies. Thank you. Thank you for that. Policies are really quick. Um, these are all, um. One of them is the FOIA, which is based on state law, and the other two are crib from A L A's freedom to read. Um, they're on here because they hadn't, they hadn't been like. voted on by the board in a long time, looked at. And so I wanted to give you all opportunity to endorse it and say that, you know, we. Especially, especially with the book banning that's going on, especially in the private area, it was important to make sure, like, we checked A L A to make sure we have the most. Current um, iteration of uh, the library book rights. And I think it's already on a page. We already said we have them, but they're part of our policies. And the same thing for the um, the freedom to view, which is uh, part of the FOIA. Uh, the state law hasn't changed in a really, really long time. So there was, there really weren't. They really weren't that, yes.
So the, the freedom to read, I'm not seeing it in twenty twenty three dates somewhere. I'm missing it.
Well, it won't be. Well.
Twenty twenty two or twenty two. The, well, the last.
The last time we appeared, it was in two thousand five.
And have there been changes since then?
No. That's what we.
So it's, it's kind of like renewing our.
Yes.
Yes.
There's not been changes, but she's presenting it for us as a chance to re-review it and re-endorse it. And with the current constituency of the board.
So this is the current version of A L A. A L A didn't change anything?
It changed it. There was a lot of changes, which you can see by there, but it hasn't, no. And, you know, it's getting worse. And like the, the only, and what this says is like more relevant than ever. So though it hasn't been updated.
When you.
So the A L A, as we say, you didn't see them.
We continue to endorse the A L A version. This version that we have in front of us is the most current version from A L A. Yes. But we don't have, because usually, I think what we got caught up with, we usually have the changes between. The old.
Yeah, there's a track.
So we don't have those because this came from.
So this is just a reading to. The freedom to read from the A L A has not changed since two thousand five.
And the library bill of rights haven't changed in a long time either. So what's, most of what you're seeing out here today, including the, the. The freedom to view, I think, which speaks to the FOIA pieces, that also comes from state laws, not something that we put together. That hasn't changed either. So.
I would have, I would do to be tracked with the attorney about that with the FOIA. There, I think there actually has been several.
There have been changes, but not in a, a long time. Not um, in recent, like since two thousand ten or something. We can hold off on that one. We, we started to say, let's hold off on that one. I'm okay.
I would prefer a standard double, having our attorney double check that because. I, I'm, I know that there's been many changes to FOIA law, and I think Mike would back me up on that. I would just, I would feel like having our attorney.
And we know we want to leave that one off, so um, we can do that. We'll, we can hold that. Certainly, we'll do that.
So we're holding freedom to view for.
Yeah. And for further review.
Yeah.
And so you're saying that freedom to read, that the A L A has, has not had any changes since two thousand five?
No, I mean, yes. No, it hasn't.
So this is the same language from two thousand five.
It is, and we have a policy committee, so we did our library homework and we look to, but we've been believing either. And so there aren't a lot of changes to these ones. These should be quick. And so I, I like how you phrase it. It's a. The last board that endorsed it and reviewed it has been over ten years ago. And so especially with our book sanctuary, all that going on, I think it's important that we have a current endorsement. That we looked at and we checked to make sure that it's, you know, that we still are aligned with it, when it says.
That's what I'm asking, like, to make sure that we have the most.
Yeah.
Recent, it seems odd to me that they haven't. Not any changes in this climate, um, because it really is critical, um.
You know, I think one of these things where it's like looking at it, it's like, it's, it's, it's a political. I mean, it's not, I mean, it's not like, you know, these were. You know, it, it's still, the underlying principles are still there. You know, it's.
But like publishing has changed and, and technology has changed, like, there's been so many changes since two thousand, that's all.
Yeah, so all these principles, you know, are, you know, however, the, I think, how, doesn't matter how the book is. You know, come to be, some of these principles are still underlying, whether it's. The movable type or Kindle. So, is there a motion to renew our vows with the freedom to read?
Welcome to it.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. Any abstentions? It is, that is, uh, we have readacted. Uh, we are tabling the freedom to view until, until feedback from. The attorneys.
And so the library bill of rights, the last revision was twenty nineteen, that's what's.
And it has been unchanged since then.
Right. This is directly from that whole statement and, and then the other one, that's straight from A L A. So you can track that it has been updated, but the last time was.
And I will also state that as part of the new state law, uh, passed by, uh, sponsored by Senator Murphy. Uh, we do have to um, either adopt. Um, the bill of right, this bill of rights are come up with the, an equivalent to be in compliance with state law, receive state funds. So, I mean, we already have adopted this language in twenty nineteen, so that, again, this is a, you know, a readoption by the current. Constituency of the board. Is there a motion?
It's a move.
Thank you. Moved by Ted, second by Virginia. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. Any abstentions? Hearing none, it is passed. Thank you. Final item is going into closed session. Uh, this will require a, a motion, a second, and a roll call vote.
I will move.
Yes.
Yes.
Um, it's been moved by Virginia. Is there a second? Second by Christina. All right. Well, Secretary, the vote, please.
Christina.
Yes.
Virginia.
Yes.
Maya.
Yes.
Ted.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes.
Suzanne.
Yes.
Okay, we will.
Will be closing in five minutes.
Uh, so we only have to pause the main meeting. We are back in open session and having concluded our agenda, uh, I declare us adjourned until our next meeting.